I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm not sure if you know Susan is not well today, so Harley will be coming in. But he'll be about fifteen minutes late for his arrival.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, October eighth, twenty twenty five to order. I'd like to start by acknowledging we're conducting this meeting on the N C D traditional territories of the Picheset Shishaw First Nations. We are grateful for the opportunity to do so. Those who have directors calling in from other territories, I would like to also acknowledge the nation's express gratitude and our respect. And notice to attendees and delegates, this meeting has been recorded at my stream to YouTube on the regional district website. So we'll start with introductions. My name is Debbie Hager. I am councillor for the City of Port of Bernie and vice chair of the Auburn Eclid Cart Regional District Board of Directors. Chair Jack is with us online today, so I will be chairing the meeting in person. So we'll go around the room first and then we'll go online. Bye, night. Good mornings and the general manager of administrative services.
Good morning, Aklama Penny Cote, the electoral area director for Spur Lake.
Morning, and I am Mike Sparrow, Director for Cherry Creek.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Veronica Koots.
Good morning, Heather Center, manager of administrative services.
And good morning, Terry Fong, Chief Financial Officer.
Okay, so now we'll go online. I'll just go in the order where I see you. First is Director Steer.
Yes, good morning, councillor Tom Steer, appointed director, district of Tefino.
Director Boiko.
Good morning, Ted Boyko, electoral area director for Botha.
Director Beckett.
Morning, everybody. Beckett, representing Banfield Area A. Good to see everybody.
Director Jack.
My name is John Jack. I'm the director for Huiat First Nations and the chairperson. Thank you.
Director Siga.
Director for Area C, Long Beach.
Director Johnson.
Morning, Christian Johnson, director for the Tokot Nation, and sorry, my camera is acting up.
Thank you. And Daniel, do you want to introduce yourself as well?
Good morning, Daniel Sayon, the C A O for the A C R D.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, now we have the agenda in front of us. Is there any additions from directors? Is there any additions from the corporate officer? No addition. Seeing no additions, got a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Director Sparrow. Second by Director Coke, all in favor? Any opposed motion carried? Any declarations or conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we have minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from July twenty third, twenty twenty five, is any errors or omissions? Seeing none, could I motion that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held in July twenty third, twenty twenty five be adopted? By Director Sparrow. Second by Director Cote, all in favor? Any opposed motion carried? So we do have a short agenda on paper, but I think it's going to be lots of discussions on what is on the agenda. So we're going to start off with Heather, the week on the A C R D procedure by law review presentation, meeting number five. Please go ahead, Heather. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So good morning, everyone. Today is meeting number five. Just give me once. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, so Debbie is meeting number five of reviewing the A C R D procedures by law. I'm going to walk you through a presentation and in your agenda package, there is a staff report that has all of the history of what's been discussed at the first four Cal meetings. As well as some detailed information on things that you asked for clarification on. And so should we finish the review today and the committee is ready to move forward, the board will have an opportunity this afternoon to direct staff on the next steps. So these are the sections of the bylaw that we haven't yet gone through. I don't anticipate very much discussion on these. For sections twenty nine and thirty. This is just updating some outdated outdated language. And section thirty is just removing this section. It's not required. So I will carry on unless anybody has any questions. So section thirty one is regarding bylaws. And again, a lot of reference to old legislation on the left hand side in the existing bylaw. And so everything on the right hand side updates the legislation. Um, I do want to highlight one item in. Section four. So every proposed bylaw may be introduced and given first, second, and third reading at the same. Meeting by one motion for all three readings. So this is a change. The ability to give three readings rather than voting on every single reading is just a way to. Speed up board meetings. It is not required, but it is an option for the board to consider. And then under section six, this says that any bylaw that doesn't require provincial approval, consent, or assent. Uh, may be adopted the same meeting where the third reading is given. Provided that two thirds of the votes are a yes. If two thirds is not achieved, the bylaw needs to go back to the board at the next meeting. So I will stop there because I anticipate that you might have some questions.
Thank you. Is any questions from directors? Director Boiko.
Yes, thank you. I don't think we want to save a lot of time by getting rid of readings because. People want to have whatever bylaws are coming through done properly. And I mean properly done, meaning having proper ability for discussion. And sometimes things go very fast depending on who is chairing the meeting. And we want to make sure we slow it down and everybody understands everything that happened for each of the readings. So I'm not into saving a minute by having. The motions of all three readings having at the same time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Director Steer.
Yeah, and thank you through the chair. I'm actually going to speak to the opposite of that. Almost all municipalities and I can't speak for all regional districts that I know of use this not as a, you know, partly as a time-saving measure. But on many of the issues that come forward, there is opportunity to have speak. So you can at any part in there be able to have conversations to those readings before you you pass them. So you have those discussions during that time. So it's the same, it's the same bylaw that is being proposed. And that if there are any amendments to it, that can be had during the discussion phase of of that. And then either yea or nay in terms of it. So it has the, it still has the ability to have those discussions. It can be clearly articulated in the motion itself for the bylaw. And and I do think that there is some some reason to have some of the expediencies on certain things. And this is one of them that I think is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments further? Director Sparrow.
Thank you. So if we do the one, second, and third reading of the same meeting, we still have a question period after the third meeting before adoption. So we're not really reducing anything other than we're saying first and second of our vote. So. It may save a minute, but we still have the opportunity to discuss it before we adopt it. So there is no difference.
Um. There isn't a difference. It's just we spend, you read out three motions that are identical just per second per reading. So there's certainly opportunity for discussion, but it's it's completely up to the board what you want to do.
Director Coke.
Thank you. There has been instances where we've had discussion after each meeting. So and people have changed their mind. So. I'm kind of torn on this one because it does give more opportunity. To have debate or input on a rating that. Can. I'm, I'm, I, I see the, the reason why we'd like to do it, but I just recall certain motions that have come forward. Would this be for every?
It says every proposed bylaw may be introduced this way. So it does not need to be introduced this way. You could still do first reading, have a discussion. Men the bylaw, second reading.
Okay, I'm okay with that then. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jack.
Yeah, I think because it says May, I think I'm comfortable with it being in there. Because the difference between first and second reading and second and third reading is meant to be a space of time for consideration and feedback on the motion. And so as long as that's still something that is more capable of having, then I think we're in good shape. What we may want to do is put in some sort of mechanism where the decision to make a. Make all the readings. One motion instead of three should be, I think, either two thirds majority or something like that. Like it can be put forward by the chair, but somebody can bring it up. And then if there's a. You know, a number of voices who want to have each of the three readings for some reason, then that makes sense. A lot of our bylaws are. Simple enough that we can do all three readings in one sitting. But to go back to the original intention of the way that the readings work. We're supposed to be having second and third reading, you know, on different meetings. That's how it was originally contemplated. But that's really only has or has value if the bylaws are. Complex enough or important enough to warrant, you know, waiting for having some time in between, especially when there are amendments. So there's, there are ways to navigate this. I think we would only really use this when there are bylaws that are very straightforward and we all agree. But a lot of this will either should have some sort of mechanism in place for making sure that it's it's only done by consensus for the most part. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Director Boiko, then Director Steer. Please go ahead, Director Boiko.
Thank you very much. I kind of agree with what Chair Jack just said is. It's the May that's important to be in there, but how we determine the May is the important part. Now we'll have to work on how we do that. Is it the chair and we go tweet to a meeting and we say, okay, this one here. Is everyone agree we can do this in one reading and then boom, go forward? And maybe it's done on an item by item basis to save a minute per thing. But how we do that, the may be introduced is the important part of this thing. Thank you.
Director Steer, did you have a comment?
I did. And I, well, I was going to support once again Chair, Chair Jack, Director Jack's comments there in that. And I just also wanted to point out in certain applications, like for example, when a public hearing would be indicated. We still have to go through that process to have the ability to have first, second, and then go to a public hearing on on certain bylaws that may be presented to us. So the, there is a built in mechanisms for for having that discussion. But I certainly support the proposed changes and and that may as underlined in there. I think it's the important caveat and how we move forward as as was indicated by Chair Jack and Director Boyko, I think are appropriate.
Thank you, Director Jack.
Yeah, just as one additional. I think what we may want to do is have some sort of mechanism that allows for consensus based decision making, maybe on the day of. But maybe the committee in involved in the development of the bylaw, because often there is in some way, shape or form. Maybe they can make a recommendation so that staff will know, oh, maybe we should prepare for all three readings. Or maybe we should prepare for some sort of consent approach like this. And then knowing that the committee involved in the development of the bylaw has recommended that we just go forward with it. Because maybe consensus have already been reached on the the major committee. Then at least that would be a way for us to indicate that there is some. Some degree of consensus there. Now, that being said, a lot of bylaws have more than just a committee voting on it. So we should still give the the chance for it to be split up into proper, proper motions if need be. Just as long as everyone has their chance, right? The the procedure of this really will matter. Or at least it can matter if we start doing anything really major or controversial or that sort of thing. Make sure we go through all the steps properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Director Sparrow.
Thank you. Hearing all this, I'm, I'm going to ask a question is, is there a way a person could ask me in the meeting that they go considering doing a consent one, they do individual ones. So can we, this meeting item four, can we break into three separate ones? Is that part of this bylaw or?
The, um, the way that the readings are going to show up on the agenda is not going to change because it it doesn't break them out. Like it breaks them out into four separate readings. So however we go forward with this, it's not going to change how they are shown on the agenda. But I think I have enough guidance on how we may implement this. And I think the committees that review these recommendations should have some input. And I think as we go through our board agendas, it will become obvious what the board is comfortable with. And which are more contentious decisions and need to each have for individual readings.
Is everyone comfortable with what Heather just said? I think I'm good with that. Okay, thank you, Heather. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, um, this section thirty two is on bylaws. I'm just updating some old language, which speaks to how. Bylaws get signed by the chair and the C A O and the corporate officer and how we we keep them. So just updating the language. I will carry on. Um. Section thirty three resolutions, I'm proposing that we remove this section as it's already covered in the conduct and debate section of the bylaw that we already reviewed. Section thirty four, which is relevant to committees, and it's just some simple updates and updating old sections of the local government act. Schedule of committee meetings, section thirty five. So it currently says meetings of standing and select committees are at the call of the chair, and that's not our current practice. Meetings schedules are set according to their terms of reference. And. I'm suggesting that we remove section thirty five B as it's already covered in section seven of the bylaw, which is the notes requirements. So sections thirty six is regarding attendance at committee meetings. And it currently says members who are not members of a committee may attend the committee. Meeting. And so I'm proposing that we clarify expectations of noncommittee members. Um, I'm recommending that we add that only directors appointed to the committee can introduce a resolution or vote on a proceeding. So all members are welcome to attend, but only directors who are appointed to the committee can be introduced in resolutions and making decisions. Noncommittee members shall not be counted to forum. And then I guess I just want to know from the committee, do you want? Are, do, will you allow noncommittee members to participate in discussions at committee meetings? So I'm looking for feedback on that.
Comments from directors, Director Boiko, then Director Steer. Please go ahead, Director Boiko.
Thank you. I think it's good that directors can go to meetings and chat. But sometimes the members that go there that aren't on the committee try to take over the meeting. And take over the majority of the conversation. So we need to, I don't want to set a time limit or anything like that. People, it's always good to have as much information you can. And I like to go and jump in meetings and just sit in the background and listen, especially different. Areas of, you know, L C P reviews and things like this, just to get a good idea. But. There's a way to go in there and be part of the conversation and not take over because that becomes a problem in a hurry. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Steer.
Yeah, I, I think part of it, and I may have misunderstood what what Heather was looking for. But I just think of like on the West Coast Committee where we have ex officio members. And and we allow them to participate in the conversations and the chairs in discretion to to bring them into those conversations. And they also do, we have them do reports to the committee. So I'm wondering, Heather, was that part of what you're asking about terms of participation of of of? In this case, I'm ex officio members.
Um, that's not the example I was thinking of, because on the West Coast Committee, those ex officio members are actually part of the terms of reference. I was thinking more of directors attending committee meetings that they're not included in the terms of reference on. So, um, you know, Director Sparrow attending the accessibility committee. Can he, can he speak and have input at that meeting?
Right, thank you. I, I completely forgot that they are in our terms of reference. So thanks for the clarification.
Director Sparrow, then Director Cote. Please go ahead, Director Sparrow.
Thank you. I think we had a committee meeting here and somebody showed up and wanted to speak. And we allowed him to ask the delegation over there, just to participate in clarifying things. And then, but it was non-voting, I think it was opinion more than it was. I think if you're going to do that, then that's fine. But you can't come into a committee not being on board and try and vote or sway the vote by. Pushing it around. Yes, that's what we're trying to do. But sometimes we had that one where a person heard on radio and came over. First, you know, it was a community meeting, so we let them. On the podium.
Yeah, again, I'm just, I'm specifically thinking of directors attending committee meetings, not members of the public.
Director Coke.
Uh, thank you. So I was asked, asking at a previous meeting to attend a committee meeting. To speak to an issue. So how would this cover that? And I was given permission by the board.
Yep, that would be a way. You could also request to be a delegation or submit correspondence, just like any other. Member of the public can do.
And they're at committee meetings. Is there any place on the agenda for public input? Because in my mind, if you're appointed director. Then you're part of that committee. If you're just your director going to be for information. Then you should be sitting in the gallery and not be part of the conversation unless there's an opportunity for public input. And then that director would be able to come up and speak.
Um, so yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking for feedback on is is clarification. So we do have a public input period at the end of each of our committee meetings. But we've had a couple of different ideas here of directors attending and contributing to the discussion. And and you proposed a different item where they only speak at the end. So I guess I. Further discussion, I think, needs to happen.
Yeah, I just don't understand why a director feel that they should be able to come and be part of that committee's conversation if they're not actually appointed to that committee. But they, they're just a member of the public and would have the right to come up at public input period. So I don't know how everybody else feels, but. Any other thoughts? Director Coke, then Director Boiko, then Director Jack.
Thank you. When it comes to the board, we're all elected by different areas. It's a little different than the city where it's all one. Um, where we can represent different opinions, different area. Issue consultation with our, our, our community members. And to be able to bring that voice forward to committees, like example, the. Uh, it's not the transportation, the accessibility committee where a lot of comments were made about Spur Lake Park. Um, I think, or, or, you know, in a different area, I think that the director should have the opportunity to come and speak to the committee. Uh, to be able to voice. To, to represent their community.
And I agree a hundred percent because you made arrangements prior to. So that's a different scenario than just jumping in and and being part of the conversation. Uh, Director Boiko, then Director Jack.
Thank you. There's also a proposal or something that's happening where a committee can vote to remove A C R D appointed members to the committee. So that's happening to one of the committees in the background here that I'm, needs to give it in the public here shortly. But at the same time, we need to have a way to do that, that. If we appointed director to go on a committee and the committee says, no, you can't be there anymore. How does that work? Thank you.
Do you have a response to that, Heather?
Sorry, Director Boiko. Can you, can you clarify that?
Well, certainly. Chamber of Commerce has asked that the A C R D reps and the city reps no longer go to the board meetings because they're not voting members. So how is that going to work here? Can they just say, no, we don't want you there anymore? And that's a separate committee and they can say, no, you're not allowed to come here anymore. Like, how are we going to deal with that? Thank you.
So I think we're talking about two different things here. The procedures bylaw is referencing A C R D board and committee meetings. So Director Boiko, what you're speaking about is appointments to outside committees. So if Daniel is online, I'll let him respond to that one.
I am online and yeah, I, I, I think with regards to the appointments on various boards, that's something that we. External boards, that's something that we're going to have to follow up in terms of. The rules or regulations that that organization might have. I don't have enough information today to speak in detail about where the Chamber of Commerce is going. Um, but it is a discussion that we'd have to have with them to see how it is that they want our, our members participating. The legislation, though, does, does prevent. Um, elected members from also being voting members of of other external committees like library committees, Chamber of Commerce. So we're not supposed to be voting anyway. So I mean, that's not the issue. I think what Director Boiko was saying is that we're potentially not even going to be there. And so that is a separate matter that we have to follow up.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
I think some of these conversations can be covered off by the chair of a various committee. How they manage an individual speaking or not is probably going to be a consideration. Uh, the instances where, other than just general interest, which I think most directors who are showing up for general interest when they do speak will only. Usually only speak to ask clarifying questions like you use the term and I don't understand what it is. Could you let me know what it is? Or the other instance of what I've seen before, people attending committees. And wanting to speak is often when that committee is talking about another community or another committee or some other activity that the attending member may know about. So they may want to add to the conversation by answering questions right at the time. Um, I think Mayor Minions has done that once or twice. I think the other thing, and Heather's already stated here, and I don't know that we need to be that explicit in there. But when it comes to a member. Who is not a member of the committee. Um, wanting to make a statement or say something, there's probably a couple of avenues. First of which is to get on the agenda by asking the chair to get on to the agenda. And then the committee would either accept the agenda as amended or presented or not, right? The other thing is that the board can force an item onto an agenda. And then the third is to wait for some other process that has already been set up for that committee if need be. Um, but from what I understand, committee meetings aren't necessarily open to the public unless they're explicitly made so. So that's another consideration of the chair and setting up the agenda. So when the chair picks the date, when the committee sets the terms of reference. There should be some consideration around those kind of things as well. But a lot of this can be solved by active chairing of the committee and just making sure that we're on top of it. And then just managing for agendas and for time allotted. There's a difference between going there and wanting to learn and then going there and wanting to make a statement. Because then that should be treated as an agenda item rather than somebody attending the meeting. Yeah, thanks. Cause then that should be treated as an agenda item rather than somebody attending the meeting. Uh yeah, thanks.
Any other comments? Is that enough for you to go on, Heather?
It is, thank you.
Uh before I move forward, I just would like to welcome Director Hart. Um Harley, he to our meeting is a few minutes late, so if you just want to introduce yourself, please.
Oh, yes, uh good morning. Sorry for being a few minutes late. I wasn't uh anticipating attending today's meeting, but I got a. Email from Susan this morning. She's the director of Beaver Creek. I'm alternate. So I'm a little late because I had to go through the agenda and print off a lot of material. One of one of them was the mother of all documents that was in attachments. So again, I'm I'm sorry for being a bit late, but uh thank you. It's an interesting discussion.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Okay, please go ahead, Heather.
Thank you. Okay, section thirty seven, committee meeting minutes uh to be maintained and available to the public. Um so I'm suggesting that we remove this section and combine it with section eleven. Um we've already um. Stated that all of our board and committee meeting minutes will be available to the public, so this is just reduce uh removing the duplication. Uh section thirty eight is quorum, and again, just um recommending that we remove the duplication. As it's already covered off in section twelve of the bylaw.
Sorry, Heather, Director Boyko has his hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about the previous one there about all committee meeting minutes being required to be online. Is that actually true and enforced right now? Because the Advisory Planning Committee meeting minutes are not online and the videos are not online as well.
Right, so there's lots of changes that need to be made throughout the procedures bylaw. Um most of those change. Most of those changes will occur after the bylaws adopted.
So that's a proposed change, but not currently ready to go.
However, the um planning department is implementing live streaming of all of their meetings uh starting on October twentieth. And then those meeting minutes will be included in the board package.
That's good to know, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption, Heather.
That's okay. Uh section thirty nine, conduct and debate. Um so I'm suggesting that we remove this section as it's already covered off in section twenty one. And again, remove this section uh voting at meetings as it's covered off in section thirty six. Um so Chair of Committees, so currently states in the bylaw that the chair may name the presiding member of a standing or select committee. Um and that's not our standard practice. Um the terms of reference outline how the chair of each committee is determined. So um. I'm going to suggest that we remove that as it's covered off in terms of reference. And then section forty two, uh there's no proposed change to this. It's just states that when a select committee is complete. Um after they submit a report to the board, it will be automatically dissolved. And then section forty three, severability of the bylaw, no proposed change to the first section. And then removes the second section as it's uh outlined in legislation and also requires a public notice process. Okay, so now I'm moving into the um section of the presentation, and these are items that we've discussed before. Uh we've had um significant discussion and I've um got more information to present to the committee today. So this is regarding alternate directors and that and whether they are invited to board and committee meetings. So we discussed this at the July twenty third meeting. Um so the discussion was surrounding when alternate directors will receive in-camera agendas. Um there was a request to send all in-camera agendas to all alternate directors. Um and so I've done a bit of research and I've um requested legal advice, and so. I'm not recommending that we send in-camera agendas to alternate directors as a matter of practice. However, if they are attending the uh meeting on behalf of an elected director, then of course they would receive. The in-camera agenda and any relevant materials. The risks of sending in-camera agendas to alternate directors is that we have fourteen plus alternate directors. So you're sending out in-camera agendas to potentially twenty-eight people. Um some alternate directors may not have signed their oath of office. As the Local Government Act doesn't require that they sign it until forty days, forty-five days of attending a board or committee meeting. So it's possible that some alternate directors have not yet signed their oath of office. And then there's also the risk of information being leaked, whether that's intentional or accidental. Uh so we've received legal advice and they they recommend um only sending in-camera agendas. To alternate directors when they're attending on behalf of an elected director. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Director Beckett. Please go ahead.
I I'm in support of this. Uh uh I I do want to ask, though. Um some alternate directors may not have signed the oath of office. Um and yeah, as you go on to explain, legislation requires that they sign within forty-five days of attending a meeting. Wh- why is there not a requirement that um uh after an election? That the elected director uh upon appointing uh an alternate, why? Why is there not a policy or a bylaw that states upon appointing um uh an alternate director? Um they have ten days to uh review and sign the oath of office. Um cause my concern is if if they haven't signed it and something, you know, should happen to the the area director. Um they may not be able to attend a very important meeting. So I I guess I'm I'm just wondering why. There isn't something that requires uh the alternate directors to sign something. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
I'm not sure why the legislation is written the way it is. Um however, we could implement um. This going forward um and have some sort of procedure where um as soon as alternate directors are appointed by their elected director. That they have, you know, a specific specific period of time to sign the oath of office so that we aren't running into this issue.
That was a really great point, Director Beckett. Please go ahead, Harley.
Okay, yes, no, it's an interesting question and um the reason I'm an acting director now is because. A person did not sign their their oath within a reasonable timeline, so they were removed. So that is a possibility. And I agree because in any governance body, whether it's First Nation, Municipal, Provincial, Federal. Uh you have to accept and you have to have uh both signed and confidentiality and a number of other things. And my feeling is if you don't do that, yes, uh you should not be even carrying that title and have acting in that capacity, so. If there isn't a timeline, that leaves it open to act on it because precedent has been set. That has been done. Uh I'm here because Colin Lehman did not sign his his papers in time, so he was removed. So this isn't a new situation. That that is a possibility. Outside of that, I'm not sure what else I could add to this, but uh it sounds like if this is the case. There is the open door to act on it. And the alternates who have signed the oath, who have signed the confidentiality forms and other paperwork would be the ones that would be. Receiving some sort of, I don't know, punitive action would be the right word, but be on the be bearing the brunt of the decision. Thank you.
Director Seega.
Um, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm wondering, I think, I really think that should be put into our policy that um the uh. Uh alternate directors sign their oath of office within um. Two weeks of um being appointed by a director? And would that motion, um could that go to our board meeting this afternoon?
Uh it's not going to the board this afternoon. It'll probably come to a later board meeting.
Um the recommendation today, hopefully by the board, will be to direct staff to proceed with. Prepar- preparing the procedures bylaw. However, um I think we just need some internal discussion about how best to implement this oath of office. For alternate directors, so I can bring that back to a future meeting. It doesn't necessarily need to be included in the procedures bylaw.
Director Steer, then Director Beckett, please go ahead, Director Steer.
Yes, thank you through the chair. May Heather, just maybe a quick technical one as as uh appointed municipal directors might alternate. Um signs an oath of office at the municipality. Did they, is there, and I can't even remember. Is there a, is there a requirement for municipal alternates to sign that uh oath of office, just for clarity?
So just for clarification, so all alternate directors for the ACRD, do you have to sign the ACRD oath of office and the confidentiality? Um uh also just wanted to correct the information for the legislation. For alternate directors, they have to sign within forty-five days of being appointed. Or at their first meeting that they attend on the capacity of a director, uh whichever is later.
Director Beckett and Director Boyko, please go ahead, Director Beckett.
I think I think my question was just answered, but. Um before the board passes. Um um. A alternate director, they have to s- have signed? Or is that putting the cart before the horse?
Can you just clarify that, Director Beckett? Just repeat that, please.
Yeah, I I I I'm wondering, um i- 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 if I was to, uh you know, uh want to appoint. A new alternate director, that has to be approved by the board. That's what I believe. I could be wrong. And if that's the case, um um could we not have it so that? That um as part of the board uh approval process. The uh proposed alternate would agree and sign the oath of office? Or is that putting the cart before the horse? Does that clarify, Chair, what I'm trying to get at?
So um just for, like, according to the Local Government Act, so it is very different on how the municipal and electoral. Alternate directors are appointed. So for the electoral area alternate directors, they just require that. Um it is approved by writing by two of the electors who reside in the electoral area. Whereas municipalities, uh they appoint that through their councils. Um so. So it's not, it doesn't necessarily have to come to the board to approve the alternate directors. Rather, we, once we receive it in writing and that writing is provided to the corporate officer, then it's considered um official. And then we have to uh follow up with the formalities of having the oath of office signed.
Does that answer your question, Director Beckett? Perfect, thank you. Director Boyko, then Director Kotay, please go ahead, Director Boyko.
Thank you, Chair. So I agree with the original intent of this slide of sending the alternate directors. The in-camera agendas when they will be attending. Now, does it have to happen by the staff knowing in ahead that this person will not be there? Or is it up to the director to email it to his alternate when they're going to go there? Cause that's kind of what's happening now. Um with regard to the bottom stuff there, the oath of office and that kind of thing. Um let's make it very clear that moving forward that this is a requirement, but one thing that's not included here is the code of conduct. Now, we're insinuating that this is going to apply to all committees and everybody, but we need to put it. That this will also be applied to alternate directors and get them to go through it and make sure that they're okay with that as well. So that should be added here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Okay, so this um clause is what I'm recommending that we add to the procedures bylaw, so I'll just read it out. Alternate directors will receive agendas for meetings if they're replacing their respective absent director at the meeting. If staff have been advised by the regular director of the alternate director's attendance with sufficient notice. So just if the elected director can advise staff, we'll send the alternate director the agendas that they need.
Daniel, please go ahead.
I I I think just to answer Director Boyko's question as well. Um if we look at the new software that we're proposing, we advance with um. Where in-cameras will actually be um in-camera packages will will be person-specific. Um then that will just reinforce the fact that it will be staff that would be the conduit for releasing agenda packages and. Uh those would be coded, right, with a password to get into them, uh unique to the individual if we go with that software, so. Um yeah, I think this would just align with with that potential software purchase.
Did you have a follow-up, Director Boyko?
Um yes, just a quick follow-up. Thank you, Daniel, and I think that makes great sense, and I think we're going to move forward with that. Um we just have to make sure that we have staff available that can do this, and we know clearly how to do it. Cause sometimes we talk with our alternates in the middle of the night and kind of things like this, so as long as you're going to say, hey, you're going to get the agenda. At eight o'clock in the morning and eight oh five, so you have a couple hours to prepare for it. Cause you know, just like what happened this morning, I hardly got late notice that Susan's sick, and we just had need a way to. Make sure that that agenda has a way to get expeditiously sent that way. Thank you.
Completely agree.
Do you mean the in-camera agenda or the regular agenda, Director Boyko? Can you just?
We're all talking about the in-camera stuff here. The 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 other, the other stuff is all available online for the public as well. That the alternate can go download and have ready for themselves.
It's usually the in-camera agenda is not very long, so it should be pretty quick to for an alternate payable to review. Um Director Kotay.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the process um of accepting an alternate director. Um. Uh rural directors are asked to provide a name or a name and. Uh the process said you get two signatures from your area to um. Register this, yes. Uh I'm wondering if there's any um process that the regional district goes through. To vet these people to um to see if they should be. Um I don't know if we have any reasons why we would reject an app applicant or. Some kind of disqualification. I know with with other committees that I'm on. Um where Municipal Insurance Association, it's a a different type of. Um organization, but you have to be accepted. Um through different processes to actually be able to sit on that committee. So do we have anything where we look at criminal records? Or I don't know what else we would use, um but uh to accept an alternate director? Thanks.
I don't think we have any kind of that process for a regular director.
So. I I don't know that off the top of my head, um Director Kotay, so I I'd have to look back at um what the legislation says, so I can bring that back.
Daniel, please go ahead.
Uh thank you. Uh Heather, the legislation um has the same criteria in place for an alternate director. As any um a- as the criteria for anyone who chooses to run. So ul- ultimately, they have to be of voting age. Um. Um and they uh there are some uh some stipulations uh. Uh under the legislation that are are ex- extremely high level. Um and um. Uh and it wouldn't be, I I don't think it would be legally defensible for the ACRD to put. Standards that are different than those identified under legislation. Um if we were to prevent somebody. Uh from being a an alternate director based on our standards as opposed to the legislation, it would be, uh I think, an undefensible position. Um ultimately, anyone who chooses to run, that is of uh majority age. Um uh can run and um and they are not to be discriminated for. For any reason, in- including if they have a criminal record and and so. Um now there's specific wording in there in terms of uh a criminal record that may have been expunged. Uh et- et cetera, et cetera. So the legislation sort of stipulates how we constitutionally navigate that. So it's it's all, it's all there, but it's very high level and the same applies for a regular director as would be. Uh uh an appointed alternate director.
Thank you, follow-up, Director Kotay.
But it just, it's curious to me, like, I could run from prison then. Not that you'd get in, but uh as an alternate, you're disappointed. So if you had a couple people. Um it's it's just interesting things.
There there are stipulations around crim- uh like criminal records and and um and we could quote the legislation specifically, but. There, there are stipulations around crim- like criminal records and, and, um, and we could quote the legislation specifically, but, um, but yeah, li- like, like I was saying, it's, it's the act of discriminating, uh, if somebody did have a criminal record, um, that, that had been, um, yeah, there's, there, I, I can't quote the legislation exactly without, uh, it being in, in front of me, but I will say that, um, yeah, th- those standards are set in the legislation under law and they're they're really out of touch for us. Like, they're not within our reach for changing.
So I think everyone's fairly in agreement that, uh, direct, alternate directors will all be sent in-camera agendas only if they're going to be attending the meeting. So I think we're all in agreement with that. Any other comments? Director Sparrow?
I have a comment, but not exactly about this, but the alternate director. My comment is, how often can they be here? Can I have my alternate here for the rest of my term? Or is there any legislation that says so much, or?
That has actually come up at, I think it was ABACC or UBCM, I can't remember which one it was at, where the elected official had to step down for illness, for example, and the alternate director stepped in, but that is not really an elected person. So there's, Daniel, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, I, I do. So, uh, what happens is that if, if you were to step away, um, I, I believe the limitations for consecutive, uh, unsanctioned um, lack of appearances, uh, is three, uh, for a, an elected official. And if you are beyond three without without the board, um, agreeing. So obviously, if you're going through a medical treatment or made a request to be away, that's different. But three unsanctioned would be, um, uh, would be problematic, um, and, uh, a- an elected or an appointed member steps in for you and can step in, as was the case for Area F. Um, in, um, uh, I believe it was Area F in the RDN where a director passed away, uh, unfortunately, and their alternate stepped in. And, um, stepped in and the full capacity until a by-election, um, took place. And so that's typically how, uh, these issues are handled, where an alternate has the full powers of the elected official, uh, within the legislation. So uh, acts as an elected official, e- even though they weren't technically elected to the role. Um, and, uh, and then the legislation would dictate that if a, uh, an elected director is no longer returning, if you are um, outside of the year in which an election is taking place. So for us, if somebody were to leave right away, uh, in twenty twenty-five, we would have to have a by-election. Uh, but if that person were to step away in January of twenty twenty-six, within the same year as an election, uh, the alternate could fulfill that role, uh, through to the end until the next election. Or the board could still opt, uh, that it's in their interest to hold a by-election. And so uh, there's specific legislation in there that helps us navigate those what-ifs. Um, hopefully, that, that helps clarify.
Thanks, Daniel. That was the example I was thinking of. So thank you for the clarification. Director Koots?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just for some clarification on the legislation, this is straight from the, uh, Gov BC for the in and in, in, pardon me, holy moly. A person is ineligible to run for office in a general, local, or by-election if they have been convicted or sentenced for an indictable offense and are in custody, have been found guilty of an election offense such as intimidation or vote bullying, or prohibited from holding office, or judges of provincial court, supreme court, or court appeal are involuntary con- are involuntary confined to a psychiatric facility or another institution. And it goes on further than that. So it is quoted, we, we need to fret not of someone attempting to run from prison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're okay now, Heather? Can you move forward? Okay, you have enough information?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we'll bu- move on to, uh, board meeting start time. So this was previously discussed at the March twelfth and July twenty-third COW meetings. Um, at that time, staff, or sorry, the committee asked staff to engage with other regional districts to determine how they manage their board meeting start times. So I polled, uh, corporate officers from across the province, um, regional districts, um, and I'll share the results, uh, and then I'll ask the committee to make a decision on start time of board meetings. So of the responses that I received, twenty regional districts start their board meetings between nine AM and four PM. The Fraser Valley Regional District starts their, uh, board meeting at six PM, but they're currently considering changing it to a daytime start time. Kitimatstikine Regional District starts between five thirty and seven, North Coast, uh, between two and seven PM. And then the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality starts at six thirty. Um, the reasons that daytime meetings have been supported, um, these were comments that I received from other regional district was the elimination of overtime costs, um, reduced cognitive fatigue and improved decision-making by holding daytime meetings. And then there was a preference for outside agencies such as, you know, provincial ministries or nonprofits to attend daytime meetings without incurring overtime themselves. Um, I also asked about public engagement at board meetings. Uh, most responses stated that they have little public engagement except for when there's contentious issues. And I would say that's very similar for us. Of the regional districts that have held both daytime and nighttime meetings, there was little variation in the level of public engagement. One regional district indicated they had better engagement at their in-person meetings that are held, uh, twice per year in electoral areas. And then the highest level of public engagement comes from delegations. So when people are passionate about something, they make it a a specific point to speak to a board. And then most regional districts indicated that with the implementation of live streaming, it's really reduced the in-person engagement in meetings, but has increased online engagement or folks watching the recording meetings at later time. Um, and there was one exception in terms of public engagement, and that came from the regional district of Denimmo. They indicated that they have a high level of public engagement at their meetings. So I have outlined, um, four options for the board to consider. Um, so option one being, um, uh, first board meeting of the month, start at one thirty. And second board meeting of the month, recommend, um, a, an evening meeting at four or four thirty. Option two is all evening meetings. Uh, option three is status quo. And then option four is status quo and revisit, um, with the newly elected board in twenty twenty-six. And then I also just wanted to state that, um, we would continue the practice of holding COW EA, AV and B meetings ahead of board meetings, uh, regardless if they're during the day or the evening. Um, and West Coast committees are generally not scheduled on the same day as board meetings because we usually hold those meetings on the West Coast. And then, um, as we have reminder, um, the board supported, or sorry, the committee supported more in-depth regional hospital district meetings four times per year. Um, so I'll stop there and ask for input.
Thank you, Director Sparrow, then Director Kotake. Please go ahead, Director Sparrow. Sorry, I saw his hand first.
Um, so I looked through this, and we did talk about before about, um, which way to go, and I, I go back to when I was at Cherry Creek, and they've been around since the late fifties with their board meetings, and it used to be the second Wednesday, seven PM, first of every month. And the board consisted mainly of elderly people that were retired, uh, because what happened, maybe because the people couldn't get there to the meetings because they had things to do after work with their kids and their family and putting the bed in the water. And they have recently, like, five, eight years ago, they went to nine thirty AM meetings on Wednesdays. And actually, what happened there was the board became younger because people that have school-aged children could have to give the kids to school and then make the board meeting, and then get back and then bring their kids out, which wasn't available to them before. So everything leans towards going towards an evening time, but actually, in reality, you're going to not get the diversity you want. Diversity actually happened during a daytime meeting, people could get it, and they could get home at time. And what we're seeing right now in this board meeting, we have younger people here because we have that ability to have it during the day, which may not be presented if we do it at nighttime. So with that in mind, add option, if I go to, uh, option three, um, to keep it the way it is, or option four, because we're going to get more diversity though. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kotake.
Thank you. Uh, they're very the same, um, comments. I would go with, uh, definitely for the rest of our term, status quo. If, uh, new directors want to, uh, look at this, they can bring it up. Um, it could be suggested, I would, but I would absolutely recommend option three, uh, at this time for this board. Um, we do, you know, I have got longevity at this board um, twenty-one years, and this com- these comments have come up. We switched to daytime meetings because of the reasons that were identified here by other, uh, regional districts and, um, to have, uh, evening meetings, uh, for the West Coast was not a preference because, uh, they would have to drive back at night uh, in the dark to the West Coast, you know, like an hour and a half or more of driving. Winter time, they had difficulty getting here. The, uh, uh, ability now with wifi, um, to have, uh, meetings, uh, internet meetings is really a bonus, but, uh, we've experienced where the power's gone out. Um, meetings that are in-person are much more, um, personal. And I think that people have a better, um, ability to communicate with the board if they're in camera. Uh, I think that they represent better, and I'd like to, uh, guess hear more before a motion is made. Thank you.
Director Boyko, then Director Steer, please go ahead, Director Boyko.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I agree with, uh, some of the things that we just said, but one of the other things is, one of the things that Director Kotake just said is wifi goes in and out. And having ability to have face-to-face meetings is problematic if you are working and have a normal nine-to-five job. So I just looked at some statistics here. Seventy-seven point four percent of Canadians aged fifteen to sixty-nine work a regular nine-to-five schedule. So we're trying to be as inclusive as we can for, A, not just the public to show up and see what's going on here in person, as opposed to watching the videos. But also to have good background, diverse board members, and we want to be as inclusive as possible. I want to go for option one. I want to have some of them at nighttime, and we can test it out because I'm not the only one here at a full-time job, and it's been expressed that we want to be able to have full attention during the meetings, be able to be as functional as possible. And our meetings don't go three, four hours. If we start them at four, four thirty, we're not going till eleven o'clock. People aren't going to be falling asleep and that kind of thing. So that's my thing. I fit the demographic of I have a child, I have a job, and that would, I would prefer to have that rather than someone tell me that I can't do it during the day and I can't mistime it and make time with my child. So that's my recommendation, and I'd like to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Steer.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I'll probably be echoing many of the sentiments, uh, that Director Boyko has just spoken to, but I think some of the, um, as, uh, and I appreciate the work Heather did in reaching out to the regional districts. Um, but that was to the staff of the regional districts, and some of the issues are centered around those of us that are on the board. And while I do appreciate um, uh, the, uh, the concerns and as Director Kotake has brought up, uh, around, uh, participation times. Uh, I do think there is, uh, the one big part of that, as Director Boyko has alluded to, in terms of uh, the recruitment, uh, of a diverse board, and, and there is clear evidence, uh, that, that we have that at the municipal level here, uh, where the major constraint for people participating on our board is the fact that they do have jobs and their ability to have board meetings during the daytime, uh, or, uh, council meetings during the daytime was a major constraint for them running, and in fact, they did not run for those reasons. So it is an important consideration to have, and, and I see within the four options, uh, that have been uh, listed. I, you know, I would be comfortable, uh, with option four, but I'm certainly in, in terms of, uh, moving, uh, forward. Option one would be the one that I would consider the most relative, because then we would have, uh, the ability for both, um, uh, uh, of the concerns being addressed by, by the, uh, members of, of the, uh, committee of the whole today.
Thank you, Director Kotake, then Director McQun. Please go ahead, Director Kotake.
Uh, thank you. Um, it seems that working while you're having a board meeting is, uh, you know, you're pulled in different directions. You may miss the conversation that's going on if you're working. I think that when you're elected, and I, I understand that, you know, we want to make, um, running, uh, for a position, uh, of, A, make it so that it's able for anybody to be able to run. But as was pointed out, uh, people with children, um, when they're in school, uh, it gives the, the parents a better opportunity to participate and not be pulled in different directions. I think that if you're working, you're working. When I'm working, I'm working. I, when I am, um, zooming from home during the day or the evening, I'm not doing another job. And I am, this is my job. So, um, I think that that needs to be taken into consideration when you run. I know that a lot of people have, um, seniors that, uh, have taken on the position and participated in meetings where they couldn't, uh, tend to work. Um, their pensions were affected, um, and, uh, people with parents, you know, their children are sick, they're home. With attending to those children, they're not going to be, um, zooming in and, and full attention where big decisions are made with our budgets. I think that that's a huge con- uh, commitment that we all do when we run. We have to accept that, uh, it is going to affect our work. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Director McQun, and Director Boyko.
Thank you, Chair. I would be um, in favor of option three or option four. I've come to treasure my evenings, uh, in my first term back in twenty fourteen. Um, our council meeting started at seven thirty and often ended at eleven, makes for a very long evening. And, uh, and decision-making can be, uh, not as good if you're tired and potentially hungry. Uh, and all four of my committees that I was assigned to also had evening meetings. So in that first term, uh, I virtually had very few evenings uh, at home by myself, and now I've come to treasure that. And so I personally would like to see the status quo or, or potentially revisit with the new board next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Boyko.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So just going on what Director Kotake said about avoiding people, or how do you want to say? I want to be as inclusive as possible. And the comments that are made are kind of say, if you got a nine-to-five job, then you cannot be an electoral area director because the board meetings are there and you need to be focused. And sixty point seven percent of Canadians have full-time jobs. So I do not want to say that we are going to, I say that we want to exclude those people from running for office or showing up to a board meeting and doing that. But I want to be as inclusive as I can and make sure that people have the ability to show up because I don't want to exclude that percentage of the population and have, having a diverse board is good. You get lots of comments, you get lots of people, you get young people, old people, and that's a good thing.
Thank you, Director Steer.
Yeah, and, and I'll just finish off by, uh, maybe if, um, reading the rooms that I can feel so far. There seems to be a majority that would be supportive, um, and I'm speculative on that, but on, on option four, uh, with the status quo remaining and, and allowing the newly elected board coming, which is in one year from now, uh, to be able to have, uh, the ability to comment it, to, I think it would be, um, just reading the room, uh, give us, uh, the compromise there where, uh, well, as this board has been, uh, accustomed to the, the daytime, uh, meetings, and then have the ability to revisit that, uh, once a, a new board is, uh, is elected in, in October of, of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Director Beckett, then Director Wiley.
Thank you. You know, I, I think Director Boyko makes some, some valid points. Um, I too, having worked on other boards, um, and school trustee, I, I Um and school trustee, I I I think it is important to um. You know, to have a desire to have a uh as diverse of a uh um. A uh a board or council uh as possible. Um when I look at the options, option four uh won't address the next election. Um with respect to um determining whether or not um. Director Boyko is correct in his his perception and um. So I I I I'm struggling with with this one. Um and again, I I just. I I'm sorry, I I I don't know what to say other than I just had to point out the fact that option four won't. Provide the 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 opportunity to attract. Folks that would be interested but can't because of of working uh full-time. Um during the day. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm I'm still listening intently to. All of my colleagues around the table to to try to determine what the best approach is. Thank you.
Director Wiley, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm listening to this and. What I'm seeing and what's making sense to me is taking into account other people. For unforeseen reasons may not be able to attend, whether it's illness or other uh reasons. I thought this is why we have alternates to attend on their behalf. I don't hear that being discussed here. So for me, if we have that option and can still maintain forum through alternates attending. That is what it is put in place therefore, so. I understand the the need for status quo. I I think what I'm seeing that makes more sense to me is option four. To have status quo, but to come back and revisit it. I know that uh having the alternates makes it possible to move forward with important meetings and important decisions. That option does exist with some other levels of government and I'm looking at, as was Sishet, we have chief and council, that's it, they're all no, no alternates. So if you don't have forum, uh you can't discuss and make decisions on some important items. Here, through the structure of it, you have that possibility, but I I don't see that being integrated or discussed in the the talk that I'm hearing here. So for me, my mind is made up on what what's like it makes more sense at this point. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Director Koots.
Thank you, Chair. Um yeah, I agree. It seems logical perhaps to stick with option four, however, I. Pardon me. I always try to look at things in multiple lenses and see things from at least eight different points of view. That's how you must look at things when you're in. Making decisions for larger bodies of people, or at least that's my opinion. So I'm I'm curious if there is an opportunity to perhaps meld option four and option one. And do an option one for a allotted set of time. Perhaps we do it for six months and we revisit them. We do six months, so that's six meetings. Doing both morning and afternoon, we can take some time, figure out whether or not there is more um attendance through delegation or so on and so forth. Uh during those evening meetings and if there isn't, well, we have that discussion at that point. Uh the timeframe wise, I'm unsure of what would be best and I'd be curious to see what the opinion of the table would be, whether or not we would start that. Sooner on the beginning end of this next twelve months before election. Or if maybe perhaps we do a little bit of a mix over the next one, perhaps it's the final six months from April, April of twenty twenty-six forward until October. And then we feel it out during those evening times. That gives the ample opportunity for those who might be considering running to. Come and partake in the evening, to just sit back and participate and watch. Curious if that's any sort of option available for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Kotay, and then I'll have the last word.
Thank you. Um the reason why we we moved away from evening meetings was, there was a few reasons. One of them was the cost. So we moved to evening meetings, expect to be paying more in our budget. Because staff um need to be able to have overtime when they uh come and present to the board. Um we also have uh the added meetings for the committee of the whole like we are today. Um so that would be before an evening evening meeting, which makes for an extremely long day. Um in the past, I want to, I I remember directors actually getting up and leaving meetings before the end of the meeting. Because they were exhausted. Um it makes for very long days. When you start, e- even um we started at, I think, six eight, six P M. Our meetings could go on till eleven A M or eleven P M and um that's, that's. Very hard to be making good decisions. We're going to be running into, uh I I like your idea about splitting it, but. We're running into budget right now and I I really don't think that. I like the idea of trying to make decisions when I'm that tired, when people are are um. Distracted because of of the lateness. Um I think that it's worked really well uh since we've changed to daytime meetings. We've had the ability to have people come in. And um they take a little bit of time off of work on their lunch hour or whatever. It's worked really well. We've had ministry um. Delegations come during the day, be- because they come from either Nanaimo, Victoria, Vancouver, wherever. Uh it makes sense to have our meetings during the day. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm leaning towards option four because in reality, there could be a lot of new faces sitting around this board table a year from now. And I don't think we should be making decisions for them, what would work best for them, because they have to make the decision. What's going to work best for them, whether it's daytime, whether it's evening, or a combination of both. Uh I would leave, like to leave it to the status quo and have in there that the newly elected board will review uh meeting times. Uh as soon as they're they're elected in the new year and maybe reviewed annually to see if that's working or not working or if they want to change it. So I I'm leaning towards option four. Director Kotay.
Um I'd make a motion then uh for option four, status quo, daytime meeting, revisit with newly elected.
Director Boyko. Director Boyko.
Sorry, I'd like to have this as a recorded vote, please.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Seconded by Director Sparrow. Did you have a comment, Director Boyko? You still have your hand raised.
I'll wait for the vote, but my preference is option one and then option four because what Director Beckett said was very important that. We want to attract a more diverse board and by saying you can do things maybe in the future, we just eliminate the whole next election of changing things around. So we're just negating everything for four years by picking number four at this point. Thank you.
I actually disagree. I think you have a very diverse diverse board. I actually went through. And it is very diverse as far as ages and males and females. Employed, self-employed, retired. So I think it's a very diverse board. Uh Director Sparrow, then Director Steer.
Thank you. Uh yeah, as I mentioned, Cherry Creek, we we did this for years at nighttime and we got a more diverse board during the daytime, it's nighttime. You you, if you have children, you weren't there. If you worked out, no ship, you weren't there. There's a lot of reasons why you couldn't be the, and the board is, was more diverse now. Because it's daytime, times of night. So I know it sounds backwards, but actually it works better this way.
Director Steer, did you have a comment? You had your hand up.
I I did, yes. Uh well, just I I in terms of the the practical reality of of why I would be supporting option four, there would be no support for option one. It sounds like other than maybe a one or two board members. So it is a practical decision and I completely agree with uh Directors Boyko and and Beckett around. Uh unfortunately, we won't have the ability to uh test whether that inclusivity of of what was it, sixty plus percent of the population that does work. Uh between nine and five. So um I will be supporting option four just based on practical reality and at least give uh the option coming into a new elected board to have have a say in this at at as. Unfortunately, post-election.
Thank you, Director Miss Angelo.
Thank you. Um. I think option four is a good way to look at this uh currently, just because we do need the opinion of those that are soon to come. And but keeping that in mind is. I'm sure there's a way we could structure those night meetings to be the shorter of the two meetings. And just make sure that um you know, the day meeting is. I I'm sure we could prepare in a way that if we did have to go to one meeting a month, starting at four, four-thirty. Um yeah, we could si- we could structure that meeting to be precise, a little more precise than open-ended and and going to those long hours. But I do support option four right now because it, we do need the other people that would be onboarding to be part of that discussion.
Any final questions or comments? Okay, so I'm going to call for the questions. So it's recorded votes, so we'll go around the room. Um oh, sorry, I we do that at city council, so raise your hand. If you want to read out the motion.
So the motion that I have is that the committee of the whole recommend advancing with option four regarding the start time of board meetings for the procedure by law update. To remain with status quo and revisit with the newly elected board following the twenty twenty-six local government launch.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion?
Will we stop sharing first?
Thank you. Director Kotay, all in favor? Keep your hands raised, please. Director Kotay, Director Sparrow, Director Koots. Director Wiley, Director Haggard, Director Steer, Director Seega, Director Jack, Director McKeon, Director Miss Angelo, Director Beckett, Director Minions. All against. Director Boyko. Okay. Moving on, Heather. Thank everyone for the conversation.
Okay. That's my screen. Okay. The last thing um that we are going to talk about is public input. So at the July twenty-third Cow meeting, the committee expressed a desire to explore public input options. To make input more meaningful by adding an input session at the beginning of the meetings rather than only at the end of the meetings. So this is, on the screen is our current process. So the public can ask questions at board and committee meetings in person at the end of the meeting. Via an email or by submitting a text in the Q and A function. Um and each meeting also allows three delegations. So um to add a public input process at the beginning of the uh meeting. This is what I would recommend and this is similar to how other um municipalities in this region do this. So add a public input period to all board and committee meetings at the beginning of the agenda. Limit the entire public input period to ten minutes total. Except uh input from folks in the room or virtually. Input must be related to an agenda item. And a maximum of three minutes per presenter and no video uh permitted. Um so it will be up to the chair to ensure that the input is actually related to an agenda item. So it would be the chair's responsibility to stop somebody if they're um not speaking to an agenda item. And then uh at the end, also have a question period. Um and I recognize that we do have a question period, but I'm trying to put a little more uh few, few more limitations and um descriptions on what it actually um entails. So again, limit question period to ten minutes. Accept input in person or virtually. Questions must be related to an agenda item and maximum three minutes. Again, no video permitted. Um and I'm not suggesting public input is added to the advisory planning commissions. As those have specific pub- uh public input processes and that input should be directed to the board, not to the APCs. Um and I think I'll just stop there and let you have a discussion on this.
Director Kotay, then Director Boyko, please go ahead. Thank you. I have a question. What is no video permitted?
If somebody is presenting um, asking a question or presenting public input virtually, they're not allowed to share their screen. If they want to have a presentation, they can choose to be a delegation.
Director Boyko, then Director Steer, please go ahead, Director Boyko.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the clarification on the no video permitted. Um yeah, we, I I kind of agree with that. Right now. I get lots of questions to the public of why would I go to a board meeting because I have to wait until one hour, two hour, three hours, whenever the board meeting ends, which is unclear. Depending on how often we talk. And then I get to talk at the end about something that's already been voted on, so why is the point? So we talk about people not showing up to these things. That's one of the big reasons. There's no reason for them to show up. They just sit there and do it. That's why. Nobody comes. But when you look at the stats on how many people watch our meetings, we're over three, four, five hundred on some of these meetings, especially if it's get contentious. So people want to have, people want to know, people want to have a voice heard. Having an input session at the start would be great. And people want to do that, and they'll probably actually show up and do something because right now. It's basically a waste of time for them to show up for three hours and sit there twiddling their thumbs to maybe talk at the end about something that has no relevance. Um I do have a question about this advisory planning commission thing. Right now, we've limited the public input a lot because we reduced the amount of public hearings and stuff like that. So I want to be very careful that we're not. Taking the public input away totally on certain things. I mean, there's a public notification if you're close by s- some things, but. Other than that, we've already reduced that quite a bit already. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Steer.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um yes, I'm very much in support of of this. Uh I may have just a couple of 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 uh. Comments in terms of the structure. Um this has been uh the allowing the public comment on agenda items at the beginning has been very effective uh at the municipality here. It allows the public to be able to, as Director Boyko uh mentioned, to be able to have some input um at the beginning of the session. Um I I would suggest though uh that uh there is responsibility of the chair, but uh to state the agenda item that they will be speaking to. Um so that the chair has a good idea of what that agenda item is and they can have a little bit more control over that. Uh if they do, start to digress off. Um and and I would suggest in instead of the three-minute max per, uh is a two-minute max. And the reason for that is it it allows for a concise comment and it also allows for more input. The other thing that we allow to do, if there is not um, uh if there is not, say, five people for their two minutes each. It would then allows uh the the speaker to go back to have input. Um if there's still the ten-minute time allotment and then they can uh if they have further uh time constraints so that they can address it there. Um it it does um, it does work very well uh and allows more people to participate. Um and I think uh, yeah, and then of course, at the very end. Uh when then there is questions to the agenda item that they want to speak to, uh whatever it is, and once again, it it's usually uh questions of clarity. Um because it can, those can also, and the chair has to be very cautious as well, those questions could uh seep out in into the atmosphere. So uh having a clear agenda item they speak to um i- is very important as well as those questions for clarity at the end.
Thank you, Director Jack, Director McKeon, and then Director Sparrow. Please go ahead, Director Jack.
Yeah, um I think having a public input period at the beginning is really good. I would rather than having a limiting the input period to ten minutes total. We would uh maybe limit the number of people as well as the the amount of time and then we can eyeball it. Because sometimes there's there's time in between getting people uh up to the podium and them figuring out what they need to do and you can lose a minute doing that. So uh I think just number of individuals um and then giving them the three minutes or whatever. And then we can aim for fifteen minutes, so that's, they can be five people if need be. Um, I don't think we'll ever hit a particular max, and if it's that important, then there would be people who would probably want to be part of a delegation instead. Because then there's ten minutes for the presentation and then an unlimited amount of time for Q and A. So it just comes down to making sure people know what it's for. What I would ask for as well, if we get rid of the ten minute total, we would have three minutes for each person, up to five people. No video, no presentations, no props. And I think that would be the three that I would go for for that. Um. Yeah, I think it really just does come down to the chairing uh will matter too, making sure they stay on topic um to the point where they're not just having public input on something that's not even on the agenda. Um, that's going to be important, I think. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Director McKeon, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, currently, our council uh allows public input at the end of the agenda. We did try it at the beginning and um it tended to sort of get out of control uh time-wise. And so I would be willing to look at the uh adding it to the beginning of the agenda only if the chair was extremely conscientious about controlling the time. Because currently, when we have three delegations, that can take an hour. By the time they do their um, they're, they do their delegation, there's questions. Um, sometimes the our meetings don't start uh for an hour because of the delegations, and it doesn't mean they're not interesting and and questions are always good. But just um, just being conscientious of 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 our time. And so if the chair was diligent in limiting the the number of presenters and the time they had to speak, then I would uh I'd be going to look at that option. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sparrow, then Director Boyko. Please go ahead, Director Sparrow.
Thank you. I'm all good for public input unless what they want to say, but um if you're limited to uh three minutes per presenter and ten minutes total, we could get a whole bunch of people on the agenda that are for something. And then we get people that are against it, but they could be put it on the list and then we get heard. So we have to find a way of, if we're going to do this, to find the pros and the cons to alternate back and forth. Otherwise, you could end up with four speakers or five speakers, all pushing one direction. And then they run out of time for those who wish to have a different view. So we have to and it'll be contentious. And there's some things coming up that are going to be contentious, and they are going to be committed meetings. And it might be now in the future. So we have to look at a way of trying alternate if a pro or a con approach is only taken. So we have to know sort of what the speaker is going to also talk about on the agenda, know to get a balanced diet of what we're going to get. And the second thing is question periods at the end, but really it's not really a question period or a comment period, because you can't question because decisions may be in common and the one may have asked for clarification. So I know this question period, but really it's more of a comp.
Thank you, Director Boyko.
Yes, thank you. I kind of agree with it. Director Sparrow just said is we need to have a balance between pro and con, whatever that is, and however that is, but that's going to be up to discretion of the chair while you're having a meeting. And if something is contentious, there is a reason that we're paid to do this is to listen to people and do things. And sometimes things are going to take more than ten minutes. So having a timeline, I think is going to be problematic. Having a number limit, I think is a good way to start, but I think we should have some flexibility to that. If we have twenty people that want to talk, we need to figure out a way to accommodate something that at least picks a good selection of those people so that we hear them. Now, should we take two hours to do this? I think that would be problematic, like is what Director McKeon just said. But we need to have a balance. In both for we do town halls and we get public opinion, and that's when people can talk for hours and hours and say whatever the hell they want, and that's great. But should that happen for a board meeting? No. But should we, and the other board members don't have those kind of meetings for the people to get the feedback, but we need to have a good method of feedback. So I think we should have a time limit per person, no video or presentations. And we should start with, say, five people, like Director Jack said, or Chair Jack said, that we need to have time to have people go back and forth because that could take a minute. But at the same time, if we have a bunch of people that want to talk, we need to make sure that we get both sides of whatever issue is there and have a bit of flexibility to make this work and be useful for people. Thank you.
Uh, speaking from experience for city council, when you have public input and question period at the same meeting, people will get confused at public input. They'll be asking questions. And then a question period that be having public input. So you have to be really careful and I remember, and also for time-wise, I remember chairing a city council meeting, and I actually gave the person more than his allocated time. Four years later, he's still coming to city council complaining to me that I cut him off. So um just be forewarned that this is going to happen. And sometimes lots of times during question period, people will be talking, they have to interrupt and say, do you have a question? So it's going to take some time to work out these kind of bugs, but I do like the idea of having public input at the at the beginning. And uh as we said, if there is a happens to be a contentious issue and the gallery is full, you can sit, the chair can sit and make a motion to the board. We want to continue with public input period. That's how you solve that issue. So anyway, that's my two cents worth. Any other comments? Do you have enough direction, Heather, to move forward with this one?
Um, yeah, as long as the committee is in agreement. So I I've I I've heard the recommendation a couple of times of changing it to a limit of five people rather than a ten minute limit. And so if the committee is happy with that, I can um include that in the procedures by law. And I do like the idea of stating the agenda item that you're speaking to to keep the person on on an actual agenda item. So we can write that into into this. So, yeah.
Everybody's in agreement with that? Perfect.
Okay. Okay, and then I think this is last slide. So um I will recommend that the public provide their name and their street name, not their civic address prior to providing any input or asking questions. So example, I'm Joe Smith and I live on Arve Road. Um, right now, we don't have that written into our procedure. And sometimes we get questions from emails and we don't know who the people are or in the Q and A section of um Zoom. So I think this just helps provide some context to who's um providing the input. Um, and then once the procedures by law is prepared and adopted, we need to better communicate with the public about how they can communicate with the board. Um, quite often, we're getting all kinds of correspondence, um, and we have to make decisions on what to be included in the um in the actual agenda. Right now, I'm getting forwarded news articles. Um, so we don't want to include that in the agenda packages. However, I think we just, we need to be really clear to the board on how they can engage with the the board and how that information will be shared, like in a public format, the public's very clear.
Thank you, Director Koots.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think this could be a wonderful uh space to add in that I'm here to discuss item number five B uh blank. I am Joe Smith, live on Arve Road, discussing blank.
Director Cote. Thank you. Um, if we have a specific five members uh able to discuss at the beginning of a question period, um, how will we um make that decision as to which five if there's ten? If there's ten people standing in line here and we have another four online, how do we make that decision on how we're going to let people speak? And do they have to register before? Let me just cross my grave. The um, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
No, I I was just gonna, I I was gonna speak to that, but if you have a comment, Heather, I'll I'll wait for your comment, and then I can tell you what we do and to mitigate that.
Yeah, I I was thinking that would be up to the chair, but also um I'll I'll wait to see what um District of Tofino does for the people in the room. But the folks online will need to register through the Q and A function, so I would need to share that information with the chair.
Go ahead, Director Steer.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um, uh, that is um uh partially how we do it and the other, sorry. Um, that is partially how we do it, that there is the online, of course. It's the government of B C. Uh, the, I apologize. Uh, the the way we do it is also that at the at the entrance to the gallery, there's a signup sheet, and then the order that the signup sheet has been uh written down um is the order in which those people will be called to speak, and then the online portions are are given uh that opportunity as well.
What happens if there's ten? And we only allow five? I think what I had kind of said was it has to be like either a motion or agreement by the board to keep moving forward. That makes sense. Um, Director Boyko, then Director McKeon.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to agree with what you just said there. It comes up to the chair to make a motion to keep going. I mean, we're going to have items that are very contentious for whatever reason, and we want to be able to not limit the public to say, hey, you know, do things and if there's three more people to speak and they got three minutes each, I think we get to hear time to actually listen to them. But echoing what uh Director Steer just said, it comes down to the the chair. I mean, they get paid extra money to make the decisions and you go next, you go next, you go next, duh duh duh, make it random, pick someone in the boardroom, pick someone online, pick someone in the boardroom, pick someone online. And not have any favorites. That's going to be the key going forward. I do have a point about the previous slide that says, my name is Joe Smith from Arve Road. Now, I grew up here, I've lived here, I don't know every road in this valley, there's lots out here. I would further change that to say, my name is Joe Smith and I'm from Beaufort, and just leave it like that. Keep it simple. So everyone knows where you're from and just go from there. They don't need to do their full address, just do that and carry on. Keep it simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Director McKeon.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just curious why you wouldn't ask for their civic address? We, every um, every person that gets up to speak at our council meeting has to give their name and their and their civic address. So just wondering why you would leave that out.
Um, we usually redact that information in uh correspondence, so that was sort of my line of thinking. Um, yeah.
At city council, we previously used to ask for people's address, but then we reviewed our procedures and bylaws, and that was not a requirement, so we just ask for their street address now as well. So that makes sense to me. Yeah, Director Seega.
Thank you. Yeah, I um was was wondering if when they sign up, they can also indicate whether they're pro or con in terms of the uh item on the agenda, so that you're getting like um both opinions presented. And um, yeah, I'm I'm uh, I I like the idea of just knowing the general um uh like district that people are are uh living so that you can put into context how uh how the thinking is going.
Thank you, Director Cote, then Director Sparrow.
Thank you. Uh, so this is not a delegation, this is a question period. So they're supposed to be coming with a question, not an opinion.
Uh, the first section of the beginning of the meeting is public input period, to provide an input on an agenda item, and then at the end of the meeting is question period.
Director Sparrow.
Thank you. I like Director Seega's idea of taking pro or con, so we get both sides of story. Like I said, we could get a whole bunch of people one direction, taking the whole time up, and when we don't get the the con part of the other side of the story. So if we could just they're gonna say it anyway, so most will come in and and tick the sticky box. We, the chair has an idea how to alternate back and forth. Like the U B C M, right? Something like that. A- as far as the street, as far as the names goes, it's Arve Road and Arve Street, one's in the city and one's in Cherry Creek. So it is important exactly see what's going on. So but then it's all good. I have one further question later on forward, almost.
Is your question about this or something else? Okay. Any other comments? Do you have enough consensus to move forward, Heather, or do you need more clarification?
No, I'm good. Um, so at the board, excuse me, boarding meeting this afternoon, the board will be asked to pass a resolution to direct staff to draft the procedures by law. Um, I'll bring a draft by law back to the board. Um, we'll also get legal review. And then once the board has a chance to look at it, we will also advertise to the public for public input and then bring it back for adoption.
Director Riley, did you have your hand up? Okay. Director Cote.
Thank you. So I'm thinking about this. Uh, what is the difference between public input period and being a delegation? When you're speaking to?
Yeah, so the big difference is the time that you're allowed to present. So we're proposing three minutes for public input, and you're not allowed to share a presentation. So you have to be a briefs. You know, I am in support of this development variance, or I oppose this development variance. Whereas a delegation is is meant to present something, a big topic to the board and share information.
So this basically, well, that, but as far as talking to an issue, the um can, the delegation has to be um delegation approval is how many days before? And then this is, you could actually just show up at the meeting and step up.
Yeah, correct. So delegations are approved a week in advance of the board meeting. Um, but I would say that it would be normal for somebody to see the board agenda and have um concern and want to come in and share that. And so that's providing that them that opportunity.
Director Steer, did you have your hand up?
Uh, I I did, but I think Heather answered uh Director Cote's uh question, and I I would have pro- provided some uh comment regarding that, but I think she answered it sufficiently.
Any more comments or questions for Heather? Director Sparrow.
It's one's way off the board here. Um, page twenty-four seventeen B. It uh says at the very end, each member present shall signify their vote by raising their hand. Should we modify that to electronic voting we're going to do as well? So we're comparing that.
Sorry, I I'll have to look back at that one. Um, but if that is is required, yeah, we'll make that change.
Yeah, because otherwise we'll be modifying before we finish it because we do electronic voting. So it could be by hand if it fails, but it also would be something like that. Uh, page twenty-four seventeen D. This is subject to section five election of chair and vice chair, a section that I mean that participation, wherever a vote of the board on a matter is taken, each member present shall signify their vote by raising their hand. Or
Yeah, we can, we can make that change. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Director Sparrow. You did your homework. You read everything. Okay, anything else, Heather? Are we at the end?
That's the end.
Wow, we did it, you guys. That's awesome. Congratulations. Okay, reports. So I, we thought it would be nice to go around the room and talk about your U B C M experience, pros, cons, what you liked, what you didn't like, any takeaways from it. Uh, Director Beckett, you have your hand up first. Please go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak first. Uh, I I just wanted um on my behalf and and hopefully on behalf of the entire board, acknowledge the recognition that one of our colleagues, uh Penny Cote received um at this past conference for her dedication, her long service, and her commitment not only to her community, to to um uh the association, um, but to the board, um, our own board and what she brings, her knowledge, her experience. And it 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 can be a thankless job as we as we all know. But I I wanted to recognize my friend and colleague uh for many, many years of service above self. Thank you very much.
I think we can all echo that sentiment, Director Beckett. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your award, Director Cote.
Thank you.
Director Boyko, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, one thing I talked about with Director Steer actually was the hundred dollar lunches that are provided. I don't see the good value for money, and I think this, he mentioned that the District of Tofino actually said, we're not going to participate in that moving forward. And I like to consider that because I like to consider that because. Honestly, we can find a better way to spend taxpayer funds, but the experience was good. The federal address was a little bit concerning that we're spending a lot of money on modular housing and I'm. Concerned about what the implications of that are if we're gonna consider. People living in smaller housing as the way that we're gonna promote taxpayer funding in the future, but that's a federal issue, but. No, I think that was a good thing to go do, thank you.
Thank you Director Kotay, did you have any comments?
I'll just go around the room. I sure do. Um, I'll start off with, um, we, the regional district um, had a student delegate. That we uh, sponsored. Name is Alex Sam. Um, he uh, comes from the Sprout Lake Volunteer Fire Department. Um, and uh, he's a T-Shот junior uh. Eighteen year old T-Shot uh, member. Um, he was exemplar at U B C M. Uh, it made, makes me very proud that we sponsored him to go there. Uh, he was very responsible and made the best time of all of his time. He has um. Been introduced everywhere to everyone from the uh, premier to all of the ministers. Uh, I have to do a shout out to George Anderson. Um, uh, Assistant um, Ministry of Trans- Transportation. Um, who uh, took Alex around and introduced him to everyone. Um, Alex got to go to uh, Legislature and uh, for a meeting with the Ministry of Forests. Um, he had a. Great opportunity to see everything, I took him to Municipal Insurance Association, A G M. Um, he got a lot out of this and asked him to uh, attend one of our upcoming meetings. To uh, just talk a little bit about his experience. Um, and he's uh, been asked to pay it forward. By George Anderson, so and and ministers were quite thrilled to be meeting someone who's so. Um, enthralled with what was happening, he had really no expectation when he went and. He, yeah, he was just raving about it. Um, so I'm so proud of him uh, attending and can't wait till he comes here and you can all meet him. Um, at U B C M, we had a late resolution going forward. And I might let Cynthia talk to that if you want to. Um, just about what the uh, resolution was. And that um, U B C M didn't accept our late resolution because they said that. Um, the issue was known about before June fifteenth, which I would uh, dispute. Um. Uh, I should have been able to bring it off the floor, but. I have complaints about U B C M this year. Um, the wifi was not adequate. So when you opened up any of the policy books or resolution book or anything. You had to scroll through every page to get to where you were. Every time it it closed down. Um, that was one issue. Uh. Them not um, contacting us that our rate late resolution was not accepted. Uh, was another issue, I have talked with U B C M and um, made some complaints. So now um, taking this to the next level is uh, I'm gonna be asking this board. Um, at our board meeting to write letters to U B C M. Asking for support for this this um, issue. Uh, for, it's regarding to the C one thirty Hercules. Um, that the federal government is. Um. Disposing of and we would like to see the provincial government support. For the the uh, federal government giving a contract to. Uh, private industry which is Colson, which is within our regional district orders. Uh, to retrofit these planes for national defense. For firefighting and. That would be my request that the board coming out. Otherwise, thank you for sending me to U B C M again, I did run for director at large and was not successful with, but that's fine. I did um, have the opportunity to, on my platform was to say that uh, U B C M that needs to. Review their governance because last year, A V I C C had one member that was appointed. Uh, uh, on the executive, which is not adequate. Um, you have to sit on different committees there and A V I C C members were not represented. This year, uh, we have the appointed uh, president, once again, who's Ben Gasselbeck. And we had Vicki Brown elected, which I'm thrilled about because she'll make a wonderful representative for us at U B C M. And um. Yeah, that's, that was my experience, thank you.
Thank you Director Sparrow.
Thank you for that, yeah, I too went there, actually most of us went there, which is kind of good. Um, and I was at U B C M pretty well the entire time. And our resolution, other resolution we had, which was N R one oh four didn't get picked up by the board either, it didn't make it to the floor. Um, however, there are some planetary groups and discussions going on as well at the same time and I went to one of them, and one of them was by the B C fairies. Which um, I asked the question there because our resolution for um, reinstating the uh, priority loading for livestock. Um, so I asked the question there and they were a little surprised by that fact that. They want to reinstate it, they didn't understand why, because they have a policy, they said they didn't change their policy. Um, so to do with that, I um, got their email address, I've emailed them. And got back uh, some emails from them regarding what their policy is, which I'll be forwarding to Director Boyko. Because he is part of the committee. Um, and they seem to be quite willing to look at what they can do to help out the situation. I've also uh, got a person from another regional district involved, um, because they're also concerned, so we have. There are, uh, we have our end with the B C fairies that we can talk to and try and change the policy and hopefully I can get this to Director Blake, because I think tomorrow. He has a meeting with his, as Agricultural Committee and they can discuss better ways of moving this resolution forward, so. Um, although the resolution didn't make it to the A V I C C or U B C M, we have a person that's willing to engage with us at B C fairies and try to get through this resolution. Other than that, I had a fun time there, the um, yeah, the meals were expensive, but. Um, it was also a good way of networking with other people and getting problem like this resolved, so. It's all good, thank you.
Thank you, were you at U B C M Director Koots? I know I had some time on my hands, it's not. Thank you Director Siga.
Um, hi, uh, thank you, yeah, as always, I was um, uh. Overwhelmed with how much information I did receive and um, how much I learned through interacting with other um. Uh, directors and counselors, um, and always, always a rich experience and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to go. I also attended the um, agricultural study tour, which was. Really, really good in terms of um. Learning what is possible when um, nonprofit societies get together and collaborate, um. Our first stop was the South Island Farm Hub, um. And uh, they, there are um, four different organizations that run out of that single hub. And um, individuals who um, produce things like um, uh, dehydrated um. Fruit or um, uh, packaged seeds can also um, uh. Uh, pay a fee to go and use these these kitchens when they're not being used by the other organizations, mustard seed. Um, has three trucks that collect food from the farms and um, stores that are uh, that is. Um. Not outdated quite, but they're uh, removing those foods from their, from their shelves and um. These foods are processed onsite into, I I watch them making fruit leather for um, for the uh. Uh, seniors meals for the uh, students, um. It it was just really inspiring, um, Flourish um, uh, is uh, a. An organization that works out of that uh, hub and um. They have access funds from the Feeding Futures Program, which is a provincial fund. That um, allows them to deliver hot and cold boxes to twenty-five different schools. And um, they also at the same time will deliver um, dry food items, grocery items um. To uh, thirty schools, so just amazing work that's being done. Um, and then the full circle of this is the uh, what the remains of what is being used of the um, produce. Um, is being collected by pig farmers if it is not um, too old and uh, they just take it away, so there's no. Um, composting fees associated with removal. And what is not um, suitable for um, uh, the pig farms um. Is being collected by farmers um, to uh, put back into their fields for um, soil nutrient uh, enhancement. So it was um. Uh, really interesting to see some of these possibilities and I would like to be looking into the um. Federal fund that for feeding students, I think that's worth looking into, um, what else is it? Uh, that North Star Aganix was the next stop and um, they sell to local markets and do. The uh, bought food boxes, um, which is done on the west coast, which was interesting. And then Mitchell's Farm, um. It is a six generation, hundred and fifty year old farm on a hundred and sixty hectares. And uh, they've actually um, started to include uh, beef uh. Products um, and use the manure. For their fields, um, so they're also looking at soil amendment, which is really interesting to me. Um, and if you do get a chance to go there, the beef products are excellent and um, they're uh. Apple trees that are again, you know, hundred year old stocks, uh. They're crushing for apple juice, if you get a chance to try that apple juice, it's really good. Um, if you're going over the Keating, new Keating overpass, if you look down, that's pretty much Mitchell Farms. Um. And uh, yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity to go and I uh, did learn a lot and then one common thing that I found is. There's um, interest in using the very underutilized rail systems that we have in the province. And um, there's interest in moving um, passengers to. Appointments um, via rail and um, uh, instituting some kind of um, transport of um. Uh, locally farmed goods as well.
Thank you Director Beckett, did you have anything else to add besides your accolades for Director Kotay?
It it was good to see folks, um, I certainly enjoyed my my time chatting um. With uh, some of my colleagues down there, um, I was able to uh, network with some individuals. Um, um, that uh, uh, you know, gave me some some insight onto some of their challenges that that I share in Banfield. Um, and again, it was uh, yeah, it was just, it was just good to be there in in a different environment um, with my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you Director Mustangio, were you at U B C M?
No, I was not able to attend U B C M um, this year, but uh. I did hear that uh, I had a delegate possibly attend from the from the nation, so I haven't had a chance to check in with them yet and I'm. Looking to that, and all the better luck for the next year, yes, we're in the process of moving, finding place, moving, now we're in the place, life is gonna be so much better.
Great, thank you Director Steer.
Yeah, thank you, uh, lots of things going on at U B C M, all the accolades there, of course, and I and I wanted to, a shout out to yourself, uh, uh. Counselor Haggard or Director Haggard, but in this case, uh, attending our uh, V Han meeting uh, with the District of Tofino. Uh, as our Chair of the Regional Hospital Board and and your support there was very much appreciated. And and I wanted to thank you personally for that, uh, it was very much, uh, uh, I I think your words uh, there uh, resonated as a whole region, not just as a Tofino specific. Uh, request, so thank you for that opportunity and once again, it was great to meet. Uh, with all the colleagues over the years at U B C M and friends that you meet there, that networking as has been pointed out is is one of the critical pieces of of the of the U B C M convention.
Thank you Director Jack.
Yeah, I found um, the week to be quite busy, um, so in addition to the A C R D related meetings, Wayatt was there and we had about eleven meetings total. So I did a a lot of walking, um, that being said, I was uh. A step or two late to our A C R D meeting, but I did find that it went really well, I appreciated that we were able to invite. The Chair of the C V R D as well as uh, Chief Counselor Judy uh, to the the meeting, so I thought that went well as well. I want to echo some of the uh, some of the considerations that Director Boyko had stated, I skipped out on all the lunches because they were quite expensive and. There was a lot of other times, or a lot of other things we could, I could have been doing with my time. That being said, I'm the Chair of the Regional District as well as a Chief Counselor, so I ended up using that time to. Get ready for the next meeting, so it might be different for different directors as well. I want to echo the congratulations for Penny's twenty years of service, uh, and I. Do think that the value is all, in a lot of ways, not just the meetings that we can get with ministers, which we've had. But also the opportunity to check in with other other uh, regional districts, other local governments. I only went to a few of the sessions, but I got a lot of good value out of them, the uh, especially the Heritage Conservation Act uh, presentation. That was something that was uh, pretty enlightening and uh, really casts what was trying to be done in a better light than. What you see in the scaremongering online, so I think the H C A uh, amendments are a long, 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 long time coming. And uh, wouldn't mind if anybody actually went to the uh, presentation. From Young Anderson and other and other lawyers about the indigenous case. In, I think Richmond, in regards to the Ka'echan tribes. I was not able to go to that one because I went to the Heritage Conservation Act, um. It seems like that would be an interesting one to get some feedback on, don't need to do it now, but I wouldn't mind talking to somebody about that, alright, thanks.
I just want to remind the directors, I missed quite a few sessions because of meetings with ministers, but they are online right now. Uh, so I've been trying to catch up, so I, John, I, there are, sorry Director Jack, I think the one we're referring to did not actually watch online now. I did see it on there if I remember correctly and that was one that I wanted to watch as well. Uh, yeah, so I had a great experience, a great few days, very busy, long days, um. Always come home sick, I don't know why, I guess you're shaking too many hands, it took me a few days to recover, but. I always enjoy the experience and I feel that I, what I get most out of is knowing we're not the only community. That is going through, struggling through these different crises that we're having, other communities are going through the same thing as well. And I find each year at U B C M, there is trends. And this year, the trend that most common trend seem to be the health crisis and uh, issues with downtown. Or downtown, so that seemed to be the two most common things I've found, but. Sometimes you think you only have fifteen minutes with ministers, but at face to face and building those relations, that's very important. And you do get other meeting, follow-up meetings out of those, so fantastic and resolutions are always good, it's always good for networking. So I was very grateful to be there, so, yeah.
Director Kotay. Just one comment, um, the the uh, B C G E U strike did affect U B C M as well. Usually we could make appointments to see ministers or staff, mostly staff at U B C M and there was no ability to do that. So, other sort of disappointing thing.
Okay, so with that, can I get a motion for uh, updates be received? By Director Sparrow, second by Director Koots, all in favor? Any opposed motion carried, no late business question period, so any questions online would be.
Okay, so we have no one here in the boardroom, we have not received any questions through email or through Zoom.
Thank you, get a motion to adjourn. By Director Sparrow, second by Director Kotay, all in favor, any opposed motion carried. Lunch is ready and we'll see everybody back here at one thirty, thank you very much.